Members of City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, September 10, 2013, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into close meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Ralph?
Thank you. We have two items tonight. Excuse me. Our first item is our legislative package. We have a very interesting process and probably no other local government in Virginia uses this way. Typically, a legislative package from a city represents the municipal corporations' request to the General Assembly. Every citizen in the state of Virginia has at least one delegate and one senator, and that citizen can go to their senator or delegate and request that senator or delegate to introduce legislation. We've evolved to a process where we ask citizens to tell us what they would like to see happening in Richmond. Now, it puts you in a kind of a precarious situation because it makes you a gatekeeper. And visualize you going up to a gate, and there's a gatekeeper there, and the gatekeeper says to you, "You can't enter." Now, how do you feel? And that's the predicament you get in when you solicit ideas from the public, which is grand. I mean, I am all for public and civic engagement. But as you think about the request from Citizen A, you say, "Well, you know, maybe we don't want to include this in our package," or absolutely not, we don't want to do it. It puts you catty-corner with that citizen. And citizens always has a right to go to a delegate or a senator. So as you think about these things, think about that process. We didn't use to do it that way. It evolved to this point. We've been doing it this way for about four years. But it could put you catty-corner, crossways with your citizen because you are saying, "No, we're not going to include it in the package." Okay? All right? It's a thought.
Good thought.
And what I'd like to do is ask Cherry to walk you through. We've done that process. We went and said, "Okay, tell us what you would like, citizens of Portsmouth." So we heard some requests from citizens. We've gotten a request from one nonprofit, and then we got some requests from City Council members, and then we have some requests that relate to our operations.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, the manager and staff. It is my pleasure this evening to bring before you our draft legislative packages for 2014. And I'm going to present to you and discuss the items that I've received for the city's proposed 2014 state and federal legislative packages. I'm going to restate key dates for development, adoption, and implementation of the state and federal legislative packages, and then I'm going to look to you for input on the packages, and we'll discuss the next steps. And before I go any further, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who did submit something. This is a brainstorming process, basically, and at this point, we're just kind of looking for suggestions and submissions to see the feasibility of them. So going moving forward, we're going to look at the state submissions. The first one was a citizen submission. Whenever a vacancy occurs in or on any and all elected positions, and I insert it local because when you say elected positions without qualifying, you're also looking at state and federal, which makes it a lot broader. The highest vote recipient among the unsuccessful board candidates at the most recent election must be appointed to fill the vacancy. Looked at some of the pros for that particular suggestion.
What'd you give an example?
I'm sorry?
Let's say that you have a vacancy on council. What this legislation would do if it passed is that the second highest vote getter would have to be appointed by council.
Exactly. So on the surface, it would appear that a legislation of this nature, if it were to come to pass, it would ensure that the citizen's supportments are being governed by the persons that they supported at the polls, and it could save taxpayers money by not having special elections. However, the problems that this presents is that the runner-up may no longer be qualified. It may not be interested. In the case of, let's say, for instance, when Mayor Hawley ran for election against Ms. Martha Ann Creasy, and she was the second highest vote getter. When Mayor Hawley passed, Martha Ann would have been the one who had succeeded him, and she had already passed. Then you'd have to keep going down the line. So that's not really a workable situation. Also, it raises some constitutional issues because the Constitution, in Section 4 of the Virginia Constitution, speaks to having equal application of the law statewide. So for you to do this on a statewide basis would be very difficult to try to go forward with it. To do it for specifically Portsmouth, it would become special legislation. Special legislation requires two-thirds vote by the General Assembly of each body in order to pass it, which is also an uphill battle. So... And the probability of getting through the General Assembly because, you know, if you were to go forward with it, they'd see it as sort of like a proverbial camel with his nose under the tent, and it wouldn't go anywhere. The next one is our school board taxing authority. This was also submitted by a citizen. The request was the General Assembly to grant taxing authority to the city of Portsmouth School Board. The tax would be placed on individual and business income. Pros of this would be the school board could generate its own revenue and would not need to come to the city for funding. And the suggestion was that further, the suggestion went that the tax would be offset by the General Assembly through real property tax relief to the Portsmouth property owners. This becomes a Virginia constitutional issue because Section 14 of the Virginia Constitution enumerates the powers of the General Assembly and lists 20 limitations. Item 7 in the limitations states that the General Assembly shall not enact any local, special, or private law exempting property tax exemption. So that would be a constitutional thing to try to do that. The next one is a citizen submission for voter identification. General Assembly passed a law in 2013 requiring that, as of next year, all eligible voters must show a picture ID when they come to the polls. As part of the agreement in passing that law, legislators wanted some money attached to that because they didn't want citizens to be hampered by not being able to pay for their own IDs. So this request would say that the state would provide the funding. The cons are that this has been already addressed. In the FY '14 budget, $166,250 was allotted to the State Board of Elections for statewide voter registration services to, in the second year, to provide purchase equipment for all of the registrars to provide IDs for eligible voters. So...
See, that's a moot point.
That's a moot point, exactly. The next one was also a citizen submission for automatic restoration of voting rights. The city should continue to press for automatic restoration of voting rights for all felony ex-offenders. The pros about this statement is that once a person has served their sentences and paid all of their fines, they should no longer be prohibited from voting. They should have their civil rights restored. Because this is a privilege of the governor to do, to restore rights through an executive It's one of the reasons why, for the last several years, legislation had been introduced to have a constitutional amendment to change this, to fix this, because any sitting governor could come in and change it in the succeeding election. So, for instance, we had this in our legislative package this past legislative season, and it didn't go through the General Assembly. It was pushed out, but the governor has, by executive order, provided a way for automatic restitution of civil rights, most civil rights, for nonviolent ex-offenders, nonviolent felony ex-offenders, but it doesn't go for everybody. So this would also require a constitutional amendment, actually, to make it something that it would stick. The next item came from a citizen, Elizabeth River Cleanup. The citizen's suggestion was to request environmental resources to clean the Elizabeth River. The river is a potential revenue stream for ecotourism fees and license. I spoke with the citizen to get a little bit more clarification of what she was asking, and she was stating that she wanted to see some kind of funds to come down from the state government. So we're saying to request state to establish a grant fund program to help clean up tributaries of the Elizabeth River. And the citizen envisions that this legislation could provide new revenue streams for the city from charging fees for fishing and boating and licenses and things of that nature. The river projects, to do the Elizabeth River, the wider river, it would have to come under the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers. It would also need to have cooperation through or from all of the businesses and local governments that have access to or tributaries in and out of the river. A smaller grant program could be requested to clean up some of the smaller tributaries enforcement, such as Paradise Creek, Scotts Creek, and Baines Creek. But the problem with that would be that most of the grant programs, I would say, the majority of the grant programs coming down from the state government right now are matching grant programs. So if they offer you a matching grant, if they were to establish a program and offer a matching grant, then that would take money from the city's other capital improvement projects that they already have on their priority list, so... Our next request came from the Museum's Foundation Board. Request for is to have the General Assembly authorize special license plates as a revenue generator for the museum. I think this is an excellent idea personally. Virginia offers more than 200 unique plates to our citizens. These plates represent colleges and universities, branches of military, localities, and special interest organizations such as conservationists, professional organizations, and hobbyists. Revenue sharing, as a revenue sharing plate, after the sale of the first 1,000 qualifying plates, $15 of the $25 fee is transferred to that organization. So it would help generate some funds. The procedure is that 450 signatures or applications are needed prior to making the request to the General Assembly for authorization. And I have spoken with Ms. Fortson, and I advised her of that. So they're looking at trying to start trying to get the signatures up before the General Assembly actually begins. The next one came from a council member, the council member submission. And this is economic relief for Portsmouth businesses due to the ongoing closures of the downtown tunnel for repairs. Request to the state to provide economic relief to businesses in downtown Portsmouth, which have experienced a significant drop in businesses due to closing. The pros of this suggestion is that relief from the state for the loss of businesses due to the closures would help offset losses and possible enclosures of the businesses. The cons of that one would be providing relief for business owners for downtown Portsmouth would also require the same relief for businesses anywhere in the state that's experiencing the same type of construction projects. The next one is also a council submission. Total repeal of Chapter 22 of Virginia State Code, Section Title 56, which codifies the 1995 Public-Private Partnership Transportation Act. And we would all love to see this happen, don't you? Repeal of this act with any practice of a governor signing agreements without the approval of the General Assembly, which would be helpful to negatively impacted localities. The cons of that would be the recall of this act would have huge statewide implications impacting numerous established, current, and future PPPA projects. And there is an anticipation that, we do anticipate, that significant industry lobbying effort would come against this measure, and I am here to verify that. So I know what we had in our package last session dealing with PPPA, and the fight was horrible. So... And then also, without sufficient political capital and huge support, we couldn't accomplish that, but it's a wonderful project.
The battle needs to be fought. And that provision could be that the governor sign it contingent upon General Assembly concurrence.
That's right.
But if we win, you ain't going to have to worry about funding because banks ain't going to go out of the living room for it.
The next one was also a council...
Go back.
Did I miss something?
Yes.
Restoration.
Okay. A council submission on restoration of matching funds for jail construction. And this was to restore matching funds for jail construction. The pros about this would be the provision of matching funds for jail construction would be helpful to local governments seeking to expand or build new jails, which is definitely a positive. The cons on that is that the funds have not been, haven't expired. What I was told when I spoke with Mr. Hickman and Legislative Services for the Senate is that they just not, they've not done a lot of it recently because of the downturn in the economy, the lack of money in the budget, and because the way that it's done now, that any requests for monies for new jails or jail construction goes into the pot with other capital improvement projects that the state is looking at, and it has to compete for the same scarce dollars.
So the money's still there. They're just not going to give you any.
Making it a little bit harder for you to get to.
That's the government.
The next one was also a council submission, establishment of a law preventing the sale of single units of alcohol by retail establishments. Request was a law preventing the sale of single units of beer and containers less than 32 ounces in retail establishments. Pros would be that elimination of these sales would help to deter the use of substance, of this substance in public, thereby decreasing loitering, public drunkenness, and littering. I looked at some legislation that we, from the past, House Joint 95 in 2006, 2007, there was a joint study on limitations and restrictions. That legislation died. House Bill 601 in 2008, they attempted to regulate. That one also died. Virginia Code Section 4.1-128 prohibits the sale and regulations, but provides local governments with the options to regulate public use by ordinance, which we do have in our city ordinance. And you can look at these particular code sections. The last one, and this should have been a dash in between the 24s, I'm sorry about that, but 24-259 actually doesn't speak to the use of alcohol in public, but it does speak to public conduct and the conduct of a person in the public. So we're pretty much...
Yeah, our city ordinance prohibits that? Is that...
Our city ordinance mirrors the, what's in the code of Virginia, saying that by, we have the right to, by ordinance, to regulate public use.
So you're saying we would have the right?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
To spend light.
The reason why I ask, Cherry, because it seems like we're having to do it by petitioning each business and asking them, "Please don't do it." I mean, is this...
The ordinances that are cited there, one is an open container ordinance. The first one's the open container ordinance. I think the second one is drinking in public. The third one is just conduct that you would associate with someone who's been drinking, such as laying down on the sidewalk, obstructing the passage of people, trying to get by on the sidewalk, that sort of thing. But it doesn't specifically refer to alcohol, the use of alcohol. It's just conduct that you would normally find with someone who's been abusing alcohol.
But can we regulate through city ordinance the sale of single units?
I don't believe you can. I believe that's more an ABC regulation, and I think you'd run afoul of the Dillon Rule within regulating the size of containers.
I like the idea.
So we could still petition the General Assembly to do that?
Sure.
Yeah.
At least to give you the authority, and if there are jurisdictions that don't want to regulate it, they don't have to. But you could petition the General Assembly to give you that authority.
I think that's a good one.
The next one was given to us by staff, just to, no, I'm sorry, by council member. Sorry. I saw fire in EMS. And this was a suggestion to reimburse the host cities of the port of Virginia to provide fire and EMS services to state-operated port facilities. Pros would be providing services to the port comes at a cost, of course, and any services provided to the port should come with compensation to the locality providing the service. And checking Virginia Code Section 58.1-3403, subsection B, in the service fees, the computation that they're done, they already include that in there.
So that's in the money we get, the host cities get reimbursed.
Right.
Do you want to talk about what a particular lobbyist is doing in this area?
I have been approached by a couple of my colleagues in the region regarding a particular lobbyist that wants to speak with us, and we're going to speak with him on Thursday. He seems to think that he has a method by which we could have the full funding of the port, the 2000 legislation actually funded. So we're going to be discussing that with him on Thursday to see...
Discuss.
To see, you know, if it's possible. This person has unique insights into the port.
Where's he been all these years?
Firstly associated with ports.
Firstly associated.
Okay.
Was he in that meeting we had over in Norfolk with the port and all of us there and heard the dialogue that went on?
Yes.
And the comments we got back from the board chair?
Yes, he was there.
All right.
Okay.
Have a good meeting.
Thank you. The next one came from a city department submission, and this is to amend the section of the Virginia Code for improper disposal of tires. The concern was that they were not able to identify who was actually doing the permitting for the disposal of tires. And they looked at the issue regarding identifying the responsible person for this particular part of the code. I checked with DEQ, Department Environmental Quality, and I was told that DEQ regulates waste facilities such as SIPSA. And when it comes to tires, anything 1,500 and less is regulated, is permitted by DMV because they regulate and permit salvage yards. So the code that's cited in the beginning, Point 2, actually speaks in subsection F to, quote, "Tires not being speculatively accumulated." So according to the gentleman I spoke with at DEQ, he was saying that in itself indicates that they're supposed to keep some kind of record, the salvage yards, of what they're doing with these tires. He said that if we were to go forward with adding some language to clarify that particular language of speculatively accumulated, they didn't have a problem, we wouldn't have a problem with that. So that's possible to do. So that's for the submissions. Now, on the bigger front, the issues that we need to monitor for potential action, of course, number one is a legislative fix to the tolls. There's a lot of conversation going about what may happen with the Supreme Court decision. As all we know, we all know that this case is going to be heard tomorrow in the Supreme Court. Depending on how they rule, it will probably be a legislative fix that's going to be attempted. So we definitely need to be involved in that to make sure that our interests...
Yeah, in front.
Yes, exactly. The next one is changes to street maintenance formula. For some wonderful reason, our Commonwealth Transportation Board has asserted that local governments are being overpaid for street maintenance funds and that they're not using their funds properly.
You what?
They're not using their funds appropriately. And they've requested VDOT to review how localities spend maintenance payments on their equivalent to VDOT primary roads, citing the condition of overall payment conditions as a critical issue.
Was it one of our three or someone in another district, Commonwealth Transportation Board?
I was told it was all three of ours.
Aubrey, Shep, and...
Yeah, we got pretty well matched, just the word. I was not there, but that's the word that came back.
That we're not using the road maintenance fund properly.
Right.
And not just us. I mean, I think...
No, that was a broad brush for all of the Hampton Roads.
You did a work session on that.
I did, in countering that. And what we showed you is that we get this much money from the state, but we spend that much money, and our need is even higher than that.
So we'll never catch up at that rate?
No, ma'am. You're absolutely correct.
I mean, what's their justification? I mean, what, Shep, were you in the meeting or...
I wasn't at the meeting. We have members from Virginia First Cities that was there that reported back to us, and Virginia Municipal League as well that reported back to us. I didn't make that particular meeting. They were going to meet again this month.
Maybe we can discuss that Thursday when we go up to the VML legislative meeting?
Yes.
You want to be there with me, right?
Yes.
You know, we sent a letter to the, to VDOT and to the commissioners, and other cities did the same thing in the region. And the pushback was so strong that they had scheduled a meeting, actually this...
It was supposed to be the 17th of this month.
Yeah. And they've now called that meeting off. So we got their attention with our letter, and I sent you a copy of that. But we essentially said, "How dare you say this? It's not, it's not true."
The next item on there is identifying, securing, dedicated, reliable, recurring revenue stream for public transit, I, HRT. The Omnibus Transportation Bill, House Bill 2013 that passed this year, they provided a funding for Northern Virginia. They did not include it in there for HRT. That's the issue. And in order for HRT to have a reliable source of funding, I mean, it's important for them to do it so that they will not have to continuously come back to their member jurisdictions to help them with their needs, their funding needs.
Speaking of HRT and their need of revenue, what's the latest on our $600,000 overcharge? Is there an update on that?
We met with William Harrell, who's the president of HRT, and his staff. They don't carry a fund balance, so they can't dig into other funds. We came up with some alternate ways for them to reimburse us, like additional bus shelters, free ferry service on the weekends that the tunnels are closed for people coming to and from Portsmouth. But we were looking for things that had monetary value.
How about the $2 million or so that we pay for the routes? We can't deduct that from that?
That's an interesting thing, and it's hard to prove exactly if, in fact, it was $2 million because of the fact that you've got to go into the system and figure out where the revenues were collected and how the revenues were credited.
No, I'm talking about our annual cost. Why can't they issue a credit?
I think we need to operate in good faith, and I would recommend that we work our way through these negotiations before we go light on our bill. I mean, we've still got the whole fiscal year. And I think we really got their attention. They even brought their attorney to the table, and I asked George to attend that meeting too. And feel free to, to add, please, George.
No, I think that, at this point, we're in some good negotiations with them to try to come up with something that makes the city whole as to what the city's claim is. And that's the important thing. It's not necessarily just getting a check, but if you can get services that are comparable, such as free advertising and things like that that benefit the city and also address this particular situation where we've got these tunnel closures.
Well, if we have a valid claim, and it's been vetted, and...
That's questionable.
And we have to pay them for bus service, why can't we get a credit?
Well, we could. At some point, I mean, that's, John is saying...
You know, stood at trinkets and a transfer station here or there, you know, give us a credit. It was our money.
I guess what you term trinkets go on your list, and you add up all of that, and you come up with the amount that we claim, or at least that we...
That's too laborious. So just, they can write us a credit.
I understand, I understand. But their hand is kind of out of practice.
Their hand is not wanting to give it back, is what the deal is.
They're out of practice for writing checks.
But if you don't ask, you don't get an answer.
Exactly.
Well... We did ask.
We did ask. We did ask, and this is the first step.
And we haven't got an answer yet.
First, they have a board just like you are, and he can't unilaterally say, yes, this is what I agree to do. And so whatever he does has to be done in the context...
Who's the head of that board?
Or me?
Who's the head of that board?
Just checking. I think somebody in his room.
That's almost one sentence on the tax roll, by the way.
Yeah, that's no, you know, we can kind of laugh about it and say, well, they got a board, but we got taxpayers.
I'm not laughing about it.
Oh, I know, we all were kind of joking about who's on the board from here, and everybody knows it's the mayor. But have we requested a credit?
We did.
And have they...
In fact, our first... I think the reason why we got their attention was that we were going to go light on the first payment for this year. And that got their attention, and William told his staff, let me talk with John. I don't want staff talking to staff. And so we had William and John, but I brought our lieutenants and captains to the table too. So did he, and they brought their outside attorney. So it was a, it was a pretty significant meeting. The status report, you asked for the status, we're in the process of negotiating. I don't have an outcome yet.
The next item is elimination of the BEPO, which is the Business Professional Occupational Licensing Tax, and or the elimination of the machinery and tools tax. This has been a hot-button item up at the General Assembly for at least all of the time I've been up there, which has been a number of years. I received an email recently from our treasurer saying that there is a big push, and there is a commission that's been meeting throughout this year to kind of come up with another formula to deal with this. And according to our treasurer, Mr. Williams, he was telling me that there is a great push to change the formula from the tax on gross receipts to make it tax on net receipts. And a lot of businesses are going to be operating at a loss, and that would be a huge hit to the city's revenues. So we definitely need to monitor any changes that they're going to try to make in that arena as well.
What would that loss result in?
Do you have estimates?
I don't have an estimate.
We'll get that number.
We'll get that estimate for you. Okay. And then lastly, on my list right now is opportunity educational institution. And for those of you who may not be familiar with that, this year, the General Assembly passed a law that allows the state, a state cobbled-together board to take over failing schools. And along with taking over those schools, they take whatever local monies that was coming down from the state, goes over there as well. Right now, the city of Norfolk has a lawsuit out against this particular situation because they were one of the, I think, one or two localities in the Commonwealth of Virginia that immediately were going to be impacted by this change.
Norfolk and Petersburg.
Norfolk and Petersburg, yes. Well, Petersburg actually supported it. I think it was Alexandria, somewhere up in Northern Virginia that was going to come under it, under this. They did because they've got a real problem with their schools in Petersburg, and they're looking for some, some way to address it, and they thought that this might be a way to do that. VML is, this is one of the big items in VML's package this year to make sure, to try to, we tried to kill it, but we couldn't, but we'll see what happens with the new administration that's coming on board.
That's crucial.
Turning quickly to our federal legislative package, here we have mostly policy issues to follow, such as the budget. Right now, they're coming, this federal government's coming to the end of its current budget year. The next budget year begins on the 1st of October. Whether or not they'll go actually pass a budget, which they haven't done in the last few years, or just do a continual resolution is something we need to follow. The second part of sequestration is supposed to hit, the second cuts in January, depending on what happens or doesn't happen in Congress. The second item is the Tiger Grant. We've had some discussions with our federal lobbyists about the Tiger Grant and going forward with that this year for our Churchman Bridge. So we're looking at that as well. They're still looking at, on a federal level, a tax reform for municipal muni bonds where they want to take away some of the exemptions, I believe, that are go along with the bonds at this time. Did I say that correctly? I'm not sure.
Make them taxable.
Yeah, thank you. Make them taxable. And then there's also been a push to get rid of home mortgage deductions, and a lot of people know that, you know, when you buy a home on your mortgage, you have a certain amount that you can write off. There's been a big push up in the federal government to either eliminate that particular deduction or reduce it considerably, which would be a huge impact to all of us, and especially in our cities when trying to sell homes and things of that nature, trying to bring people into the city. It's a deterrent.
Be a gut punch to the middle class and anybody else that owns a home.
Yes, it's a huge deterrent. The Water Resources Development Act, which impacts the Chesapeake Bay and also impacts the city as far as the meeting our TMDLs and the sewage overflow and any transportation reform that may take place. So in summary, the state has realized a $585 million surplus for FY13. When the governor met with the joint money committees in July and outlined what he planned on doing with that money, there was no mention of any allocations for state-mandated local government implemented programs such as our 599 Fund for our police, K-12 education, which I don't have listed there, is another one we're going to follow as an issue because it's coming up for re-benchmarking next year. In our state package, we had about 13 legislative suggestions submitted, six from our citizens, and there were several policy position statements, and the policy position statements, policy issues in our federal package. On the 16th of September, there's a community meeting at Woodrow Wilson High School that has been traditionally the last opportunity for our citizens to weigh in on anything that's in our legislative draft package. On the 7th of October, we're scheduled to meet jointly with our General Assembly delegation. And just quickly, oops, rushing through, sorry, wrong way. Just quickly...
Go back.
I'm trying.
Previous. One more.
Previous, yes. Okay, these, just to remind you some of the key dates going forward. In October, the November, and our election, a big election, a new government, we have a whole new administration that'll be coming in, and the House of Delegates, a whole House of Delegates is up for reelection. So at this point, what I need from council is to decide what you want to go forward with.
Okay, very good presentation. This PPTA, I think, is horrible as it is in this state, it is scary to find out that we're considered one of the leading-edge states when it comes to these P3s. Just tells you just how bad this is in this country, and because we are, we should not be the leaders with all of the problems that we're having, not just here with the tunnel issue. But when, at what time do you need feedback from each one of us?
I would say at least prior to our meeting with our delegation members.
This is what I recommend that we do. So we put this on the agenda for the 24th to allow you to think about this and...
And flush out all of the ones, even the ones with the citizen submissions, because again...
Exactly. Someone asked the question about what does BEPO cost us? It's about 5.9 million, and then machinery and tools is about 1.2, and these, I've rounded the numbers.
About 6.4.
Or me?
6.4.
Well, total, 6.9.
6.9.
I'm just wondering, since many of our localities that ride around here locally are experiencing some of the same future headaches, have we ever thought in terms of coming together like coalition-like? Sometimes we would get together with some of the representatives from the other cities, and we would have opportunities to do that at meeting times, and we were able to come up with some good brainstorming, things that would enhance...
Yes, ma'am.
The positions of the cities that are in this area, rather than you push a little bit and you push a little bit, and they piecemeal you. But the impact of what is happening in our area near is going to impact all of the cities that are coming through with the tunnels and the taxes and everything coming through. So it seems as if this is a good time to sort of come together because we're all touching one another, and we may have problems that are different, but right now, we have some problems that's going to affect every one of us, and maybe a thinking would help us. I know the citizens would appreciate something because the impact is going to hit the individual taxpayer. It's where it's going to hurt.
That is an excellent idea. In fact, it's been done before. In fact, it used to be called the Hampton Roads Legislative Coalition. I thought it was really neat that you used that term.
That's right.
And I can remember a meeting, it's the fall of 1975, where the coalition met in York County at the National Battlefield Theater. And it was representatives both elected and appointed from all the jurisdictions that made up the Hampton Roads, plus the legislative delegation. And although that's a big crowd, it allowed for a discussion. And it stayed awhile, and like many good things, it just died off. And it might be now time, and it is time, to resurrect that.
That might be a good way to get some regionalism started amongst the area. That's a good point. I think that's something good to look into.
Invite everybody to Portsmouth.
Right. Well, one of them have a nice meeting at the Children's Museum of all those people. That's right.
Well, the sports hall thing.
Oh, yeah. But one of the things that we saw as a benefit, and I guess, being an old lady at the table, one of the things, they talked, there was more communication between the cities about the needs, and those things that were commonalities for all of them, they could make one big joyful noise, and when they found that everybody was on the same sheet, they were a little bit more attentive because everybody was speaking on some issues that would impact everybody's city. But then we got so separated, it was my house, I wouldn't forget, well, I could forget your house, but I wanted it in my house. And I think that we are so closely connected now. I think we need to go back to our house, and that's the whole area, because people are coming from all of the cities that arrive around here.
How about if we do this between now and the 24th? We'll go back and look at the history, find out exactly when it died off, and think of ways that we can activate it again. And being the host for the first meeting, that has a sweet ring to it.
Well, it's too late for this General Assembly session, but the fruit of that would be a regional wish list to send to the General Assembly that has the backing of our region's General Assembly members. You can start with the councils, but we would need to include the General Assembly members, and the product of that would need to be a regional legislative package. And I got a feeling that's why a lot of the state's money goes up north in the western part of the state, because I think they do some of that.
Well, that's a big concern of the future of Hampton Roads, which was the think tank that was created about 27 years ago with Harry Train...
That's right.
And Henry Clay Hoffheimer. The big concern was the competitiveness of this region. And the anecdotal feeling is that we're a net exporter of revenue, not an importer.
Importer.
And so we really do need to be more competitive as a region against the other regions in the state. These are very, very good points that you guys are making.
You got the whole General Assembly being elected on November 5th or 6th or whatever. So what's wrong with inviting whoever they are in December before they go to Richmond?
If you get their calendar, and that's the big deal. And the interesting thing is that as a municipal corporation, it sounds like we've got a big voice, but guess what? We don't vote, and we don't contribute to political campaigns. And so it's kind of interesting to have this discussion with a citizen that says you probably have better clout with our delegate or with our senators than we do, because you vote, and you can get people together who vote. So we have a voice, and oftentimes, we're effective. I mean, Sherry meets constantly with her counterparts, and I'm really proud of the things that she does. But it's, I think it would be much, much better if we could exercise the muscle of the region as a region.
I think, obviously, during the toll issue, Portsmouth has taken the leadership position, been a lone drummer, if you may. So I think we should be the catalyst to bring, or at least invite, the regions' delegations together for a strategy.
Well, listen, and they would be interested, because I don't, I'm sure the other council members at some point in time talked to council members from other cities. I know I do.
Yes, sir.
And we collaborate and come up with some good things...
That's right.
...that we could do collectively, because if this area is going to grow, it's going to have to be a region that's going to grow it, not us operating as long rangers. And so if we can do it individually, I can't see why we can't do it collectively, coming together.
We used to meet like that.
How about if we do exactly what we discussed? We'll put this on the agenda. We'll look at the history and try to maybe map out a, not maybe, we'll map out a roadmap, how to get to what we're talking about, and whether we can pull it off, sir?
Good idea. On the HRT piece that Brian Smith, get with you, I thought all the localities were supposed to collectively going to either put in our package the support enough, trying to get some direct funding for HRT like they're doing in Northern Virginia and other areas.
Yes, I've spoken with Brian on several occasions, and also next Monday, the HRTPO legislative hot group is going to be meeting, and there are some things that they're looking at trying to push through, the TPO and PDC, as far as trying to get some funding for them as well.
Okay. Excellent job.
Sure. We have one last.
Great job. Thank you.
We have one more thing going for the work session. You've got in your inboxes, I put that in quotes, in the folks office, these two letters, and two members of council said, what's up? How does this impact on us? And I thought I'd take a moment and explain that. And I'll give Roz a chance to pass this out. While she's doing that, let me tell you how our procurement process works and what we do. The procurement process ends up with a contract that you sign. This is, you're going to build something, or you're going to buy a vehicle. Before that contract gets signed, it gets vetted. It goes through legal to make sure that the contract is legally correct. And just as important, it goes to finance, where somebody in finance looks up the budget account number, makes sure that the half a million dollars that's obligated by that contract is in the budget, and certifies that those funds are available, and then they encumber the funds so that they can't be spent for any other purpose but for that. You can only make the certification if the funds are in your budget. I can't certify, or Carol Swindell can't certify, funds are available for the Housing Authority or for the city of Norfolk or for the school board. We can only make the certification for funds that are in our budget. Now, everybody agreed, and that's everybody, that's the city council and the school board, that going forward, the school capital budget would be in the city budget. There would be no school capital budget. And we all agreed to that, and so the major school board projects came over, and they're a part of your budget that you appropriated. Now, what I'm talking about, talking to is the letter from Attorney Samuel Meekins of Woolcock, Rivers, and Gates, in which he expresses an opinion that apparently was... And so the, the major school board projects came over and they're a part of your budget that you appropriated. Now, what I'm talking about, talking to is the letter from Attorney Samuel Meekins of Woolcock, Rivers, and Gates, in which he expresses an opinion that apparently was requested by the Portsmouth City Schools. It's an interesting response, but the school board, and it would apply if the school board appropriated these funds, which it did not, you did. These funds don't exist in the school board budget, so they can't certify. For example, if they were to undertake a project in which resulted in a contract that was, let's say, a half a million dollars, their chief financial officer couldn't certify that those funds are there because they're not there. They're over here on our side of the budget. So as we thought, we being, my team, thought about how to implement the capital budget going forward, I sent David an email saying, how about this? On, let's say, school buses. We don't want to design school buses. I mean, there are all sorts of highway safety standards that have to be taken into consideration. You come up with a design, we'll put it out for bids, we'll take the bid, and when the bids come in, we'll jointly pick the low bidder. And then we'll certify that the funds are available because they're in our capital budget. And we'll sign the contract. You take care of the delivery. And that's, that's the simple way. It's not complicated. So I don't know how this got elevated to an outside attorney over in Norfolk. But the simple thing is, is that you can only certify funds that are in your budget. Again...
So the crux of what this attorney is saying though, John, is what? They, what we're agreeing to do or what we're trying to do, we can't do legally? Is that what he's saying here?
That's not what he's saying.
All right, what's he saying?
I think what he's done is, it's kind of blown a cloud of smoke that makes it confusing when the bottom line is really simple. That's just one person's opinion too. I mean, this is an attorney. He's rendered his opinion. But his opinion can't be implemented unless you want to go through a process of signing contracts where you can't certify that the money is there. And that's not good internal controls. No. I can't think of any local, public organization that doesn't have a process that's similar to ours. And that's any.
George, you had a chance to read this one?
I read the letter and it just appears to me that he's recognizing in the letter that the responsibility for school property, that's maintaining it and equipping it and that sort of thing, it's a school responsibility. They determine what their needs are, not the city. It's like John says, we're not going to decide what goes into a school bus. They decide they need a certain type of school bus. That's their decision. The procurement, the funding, the funding end of it is, it comes from the city. And I think either through a joint measure or through the school board establishing what criteria it wants in terms of either a building or equipment or whatever would be, in this, in this case, capital expenditures, they make that decision. The schools, the city would, would, could procure it, either doing it jointly with the school system to make sure that everything is in the contract, is in the procurement document that the schools need, or the city doing it independently, which I, I think would still meet the, what the state code says are the powers of the school board.
So this, oh, John, let me think. So this attorney is saying, and it looks like they're questioning the procurement process and their obligation as a board to be able to keep that process in-house. This attorney is running an opinion to them, saying they're absolutely right. This is a school board function, not the city council. Is that what he's saying here?
There's some words in here, and I'm not sure how, whether he's saying unequivocally that it's a purely school board thing, because it just says, I am concerned that the school board would be abrogating its lawful duties. I'm concerned, doesn't say they would be, it just says, that's something that, it's, it's...
It's just his opinion.
It's right there, it says, my opinion. I mean, however we want to cut this thing up, the 8.4 million dollars they just returned, it was incumbent, it had to come back. That's in our charter. Now, we can beat this up nine different ways, Mayor. Bottom line is, this is his opinion.
We have a workable way for it. And this is further, I mean, we don't need to have to do everything. We'll beat that drum several different, more times. We don't need to have two payrolls, two procurements, two CFOs. One can do. And there are communities in the Commonwealth of Virginia that have that. And, but this, this is a very workable thing. Let's say that they've got to replace the roof at Woodrow Wilson. They come to you at budget time and say, we need a million dollars to replace the roof at Woodrow Wilson. Okay? You put that into the proposed budget, we have a budget hearing on it, and then you come time to adopt the capital improvements budget. You adopt the budget, you appropriate the funds. The funds are in your budget. It's time now to design the roof. We're not going to design the roof. They, they go through the process of getting the architect, but we sign the contract. We certify that the funds are there.
Who handles the procurement process on the roof? Would the city do that or would the schools? Because it sounds like that's where their rub here is with the difference in our procurement...
My point is, is that we can do it together. I mean, it doesn't like, it, it makes it sound as if we're in Egypt and they're in China and we're three, three fours apart. I mean, come on.
And we could be on the same office. That's right.
See, the specs could be, the specs can be prepared by the, by the school system. If, if they have their architects or engineers, they provide the specs to city procurement or to a joint procurement. And then that's, that's just a matter of putting it out for bid based on the specs. So that's not...
And who would select those folks? The school board and their procurement process? And let us know that we've selected company A to do this and we just cut the bill? Or are we saying we want to select the company to do it?
No, no. When you, when you bid, when you bid something out, you're going to have to go with the low bidder anyway.
That's both ways.
Once you've got your specs and you put it out...
Or best value, depending on...
Right.
But again, that's a, that's a process that has to occur either in their office or ours, based on what they're looking for in the deliverables. So who will make that determination? They'll tell us, based on all of the responses that we get, based on the criteria and what we know, we want company A. Are we going to challenge what they select? Or are we going to say, no, we think company B was the right one?
No, because, you know, the procurement law prevails. We can't trump the procurement law. I mean, if it's something that is tangible and has a dollar value, you go with the low, the lowest responsive bidder. And so we can't say, no, you go with the second highest or the third highest.
And if they have, like the minority business enterprise piece, they have a stipulation of a certain percentage for minority participation. We, the city, don't even recognize that yet. If they decide that this company, based on that participation, is the one, are we going to question what the, what the school says based on minority participation and their procurement process? I'm trying to say, are we getting into their selection piece? Because if the lowest guy doesn't have a minority and the next one does, and the school board says, this is what, I guess I'm asking you, George...
No, the answer, yeah, Cherry, the answer's not.
We're not going to intervene. We're going to select.
We're not going to interfere with, with their processes. It's just going to be administered through the city. That's my understanding of the process.
So that'll still be their process?
Right. We're not going to try to supplant a city process over something the school board, which is an elected body.
Because that's what it sounds like, what this guy here is saying here, that they're going to be passing on their duties as an elected body to us, and they can't do that.
That would not, I mean, the bottom line is that we're looking for efficiency, we're not looking for political control. And, and, and that's, and that's it.
That's exactly what we're saying, George.
So they're going to make their decisions based on, on, on what they deem to be important, just like the city council does. And if their decisions differ from the city's, then we, then the city through procurement would just follow, would follow their directions, would follow the decision. It's just that the administration of the procurement process would be handled through a central procurement organization.
So have we, have we had that conversation with the school board?
No, we just got this last night, so we haven't had any of those conversations.
But the only, only thing is, we have two elected bodies. In the past, we did not have that. And as a result, the school board made their recommendations to the city and in turn, the council approved whatever the recommendations were, or made suggestions to them. Now we are in a unique situation that is happening in other cities and working with many of the cities around the state, where you have, we didn't have an elected school board. We had an appointed school board, where the council appointed the representatives on that board. Now the school board members are elected by the same citizens that put us in our positions. So that gives them, it's a difference when you're working with two elected boards that are selected by the populace. And I think we need to make sure we get it because this, and this is probably how they are interpreting this, they were elected by the people just like we were. So they have a voice, but it seems as if we should have a compromised understanding in how the two legal bodies work together when it comes to making a choice. And this is what it is. The people who elected us in our positions also elected them. So I think we, we need to make sure we get this straight, because the same ones that put us in office put them in office.
I think George just clarified, if they're going to be the drivers and all we're doing is doing administrative, we need to make that clear. But I don't want us stepping in and picking who they select. And you're saying we wouldn't do that.
You get it.
That's not our, that's not our understanding of the intention. The intention is just of combining the procurement function, is just to save some money in administering it, not to duplicate things. Have two of something when one will work just fine.
So we plan to get back with them and have a discussion?
I've been trying to explain this to you guys, that this is, this makes it sound like the sky's falling, and it's not, so don't take it that way. The second memorandum is from the state superintendent of public instructions. The highlighting is not mine, but read, read the paragraph before the highlighting, okay? That paragraph reads, "The General Assembly adopted budget also encourages certain local funds." The operative word there is "certain" to be carried over until the fiscal year 2014 by including the following language. And you can read the highlighted language. The operative word there is "encourage," not "shall."
No, that's right.
George, help me with my memory. Section 22 dash 1 dash, I mean, 22.1 dash 100 of the state code says that any unspent funds in the school budget that are state, go back to the state. Any unspent funds, year-end funds, in the school budget that are local, go back to the local locality. And that, that section was even cited in the resolution that the school board adopted in returning the 5 million dollars back to the, back to the locality, to us. Now, what's not covered in that section, or any other section apparently in the code, are the enterprise account funds, those things that operate like enterprise, like our utility. And that's the print shop, you know? We buy stationery from their print shop, so we, they get revenue to run their print shop from us, and that's an internal service fund. The textbook fund. Well, the textbook fund is covered by the state budget. And there is language in the state budget. And that can be changed from year to year by the General Assembly that says, and in the current state budget, the one that's in effect now, that says, any state funds in the textbook budget can be carried forward by the school system. Any local funds have to be re-appropriated by the local governing body, but for the same purposes. And so that holds true to the, the premise that the state has established by law, that you, in order to spend money, the monies have got to be appropriated. And so this is, again, the simple distillation of this, and it relates to textbook funds, is that the school districts in Virginia can carry over those appropriated funds by the General Assembly that are unspent at year-end. But the local government has got to appropriate those unspent funds in the textbook fund for the same purpose. Am I making sense?
So if, are the school system breaking their unspent funds down into what came from state versus what came from local? So example, if it's 5 million, if two and a half of that is state money and the other two and a half is from the locality, the only thing we reappropriate is the two and a half from the locality. The two and a half from the state? This memo is suggesting that any school system that has unspent funds can carry it over into the next year budget. Is that what he's saying?
Only state funds.
State fund, right. So if it was five and two and a half of that was state, they don't need to bring that back to us for reappropriation. They can keep the two and a half.
That's right.
And then we reappropriate the other two and a half.
That's correct.
Okay. And that's what this is addressing.
That's what it's addressing.
And when do we get this? And what was the purpose of this one? Who got this to us?
That was, came at the same time.
Okay.
Okay.
Huh?
Okay.
Any other question or discussion on this?
Does that explain the third one?
It's clear.
We need, we have an E for opposed session.
Okay.
Council members, are there any liaison reports this evening?
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code, section 2.2 dash 3711, for the following purposes. Briefing by staff members and consultation with legal counsel pertaining to the probable litigation involving a contract as permitted under subsection 8.7. Discussion concerning a prospective business in the downtown area of the city where no previous announcement has been made of the business interest in locating in the city as permitted under subsection A6. And discussion concerning the expansion of an existing business or industry in Burton's Point where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in expansion as permitted under subsection 6.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?